Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks so much for joining us this evening. Please be seated. A couple of announcements tonight, just as we begin our meeting. I'd like to welcome a new colleague at the table, Hope Dallas, who is joining us as Senior Manager in our Corporate Services area. We're delighted. This is her first day on the job, and welcome. Also, I'd like to express our sincere thanks to all of our Parks and Recreation staff, and very happy to announce that the District of West Vancouver has won the 2024 BC Recreation and Parks Association Program Excellence Award for the Welcoming and Inclusive Communities Program offered out of the West Vancouver Community Centre. This program, which began in 2019, is in response to the need of new community members who often face barriers or gaps as they integrate into their new environment. The innovative program focuses on promoting and developing a newcomer's physical fitness, social skills, and overall health, mental and mental wellbeing by providing opportunities, resources, and education to help newcomers adapt in their new environment and to cope with the challenges of their life and to feel welcome and connected in their new community. This program is serving as a model to other local governments to enhance diversity, equality, inclusivity, and accessibilities in their community, and we'd like to express our most sincere thanks to all of our Parks and Recreation staff and leadership, and also like to express our sincere thanks for a fantastic opening of the new Keenlau Fitness Park in Ambleside, the new Keenlau Circuit. Hope to see you all there regularly. It was a great opening on Tuesday this week.
Tuesday.
Yes, last week. And so this evening, we're going to start with a public hearing, and I'll turn it over to our corporate officer.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. I will read out the public hearing procedure for the benefit of those in attendance, watching from the gallery or at home. Council is convening this public hearing to consider and receive submissions regarding proposed zoning bylaw number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 532028-2024, to enhance retail diversity. Anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be heard and/or may make a written submission, may provide a written submission either in person or via email to the address correspondence@westvancouver.ca. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Council members may ask questions of you following your presentation, but council's function during the public hearing is to listen to the views of the public, not to debate the proposed bylaw. After the public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations. Your only opportunity to comment on the proposed bylaw is during the public hearing. Council is not permitted to receive further submissions once council has closed the public hearing. Council has received documents which are available for the public to view. A hard copy of these may be obtained from myself during the public hearing. The documents can also be viewed online at westvancouver.ca/news/notices. Please note that the online copy and the binder copy of the documents will not include any items received after noon today. To maintain order and to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, here are the rules of procedure. First, a speakers list has been established. For those attending in person, you may place your name on the list at any time throughout the public hearing. The list is located on the table by the door. If you are speaking from prepared remarks, the council requests that a copy be provided to myself. To participate via WebEx, please phone 604-925-7004. That's 604-925-7004, and provide your name and telephone number to staff, who will add you to the speakers list. When it is your turn to address council, staff will allow you to unmute your microphone and turn on your webcam in order to provide you with your public input opportunity. Please note that staff are not in a position to provide you with a specific time slot when you register to speak, so we ask that participants who wish to address council be available for the duration of the public hearing. Second, council requests that you please begin your remarks by providing your name and municipality of residence. If you are speaking on behalf of some other person or organization, council requests that you please identify the name of that person or organization. Third, please limit your remarks to five minutes and to the subject of the proposed bylaw. Please be respectful to others. And fourth, after everyone has spoken once, you will have an opportunity to speak subsequent times to provide additional information if you wish. Please follow the process outlined a moment ago to be re-added to the speakers list. If you have any concerns about the rules of the hearing, please address your comments to the Chair. Mayor Sager, before we continue with the staff presentation, I should just inform that council has received one staff report on this topic, and a total of three written submissions. One of them came just over the weekend. On April 8, council set the date for this public hearing. The statutory notice of public hearing was published in the North Shore News on April 24 and on May 1.
Well done. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Bailey, are you going to...
Mr. Mayor, no presentation other than to say that, you know, we're bringing forward a series of bylaw amendments whose goal is to really encourage more vibrant and lively range of retail and service uses at street level in our Ambleside and Dunderay areas. We've worked hard with the ADBIA and look forward to hearing from the public on it.
Thank you. I recognize Ms. O'Brien from the ADBIA who's with us here tonight, and I'll turn it over then to members of the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address council on this public hearing this evening?
There was no one signed up on the speakers list when we started the hearing, Mayor Sager.
Ms. O'Brien is...
There we go.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
My name is Maureen O'Brien. I am the Executive Director of the Ambleside-Dunderay Business Improvement Association. Since I started with the ADBIA in March of 2020, it's been... Our businesses have been quite vocal about having more vibrant businesses in our commercial areas. To that end, we did a survey called Imagine Ambleside, which you all are aware of, and the residents of our community feel very much the same way, that we need more vibrancy and diversity in our commercial area. So, to that end, we... You guys all passed, or the previous council passed, a bylaw restricting real estate, nail salons, currency exchanges. So, this is an extension of that. I want to thank our previous council liaison, Councillor Cassidy, our current one, Scott Snyder, for their work and their unwavering support on this, as the rest of council as well, and staff. They've been fabulous. I just returned from the BIABC Conference, where we had over 70 BIAs from across the province in attendance, and this subject came up quite a bit, particularly medical and dental offices taking up prime retail space. So, I mentioned that this was being discussed tonight at council. I think there's several BIAs across the province that are watching tonight, because you guys are really the leaders in this. No one else is doing anything like this. And I was asked at least a half a dozen times how. So, it was with the support of council and staff that we're here tonight. So, the ADBIA fully supports this. We thank all of you for your support. And on one more note, I want to announce while I'm here, next year, the BIABC Conference is being co-hosted by North Vancouver Shipyards and Ambleside and Dunderay. So, we'll have people from across the province here to show off our beautiful community.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for joining us this evening and everything you're doing to bring life into our business district.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to address council this evening? Thank you. No, we... We know you, so... Thank you for joining us this evening.
Mayor and council, my name is Heather Mersey. I'm with the Ambleside and Dunderay Residents Association, and I just wanted to say what a great job has been done in terms of trying to create a healthier business community. I know the residents have been wanting to have diverse and more vibrancy in the village, so I applaud all the efforts that have been taken on this behalf. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you for joining us this evening. Any other members of the public who wish to address council this evening? I'll ask one more time. Anyone else who wishes to address council this evening? Hearing none, could I ask Councillor Thompson if he would close the public hearing?
Thank you. I'll recommend that all written and in oral submissions regarding zoning bylaw 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5328-2024, to enhance retail diversity up to and including the May 6, 2024, public hearing be received and that public hearing be closed.
Thank you. Councillor Watt? Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call a question. All in favor? Contrary, carried? Thank you. The public hearing is now closed, and if there is any member of the public here this evening or watching, there cannot be any discussion with any member of council on this topic now until the vote is taken. So, I'll now call to order the regular council meeting. I ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor Thompson?
So, who?
Councillor Snyder. Question. All those in favor? Contrary, carried? Now ask for an adoption of the minutes. Councillor Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend that the following minutes be adopted as circulated. April 19, 2024, special open session, council meeting; and April 22, 2024, special open session and regular council meetings.
Thank you. Councillor Gagnoli seconding. Call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, carried? Thank you. Under reports, the first on community grants. Councillor Watt?
I'd like to recommend that the recommendations by the community grants... Oh, we have a presentation.
Do you want to...
I would like to recommend that we hear the presentation first. How's that?
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I just may introduce, so tonight, the recommendation's coming forward for council's consideration from the Community Grants Advisory Panel. This panel does an incredible amount of work to bring forward these recommendations. I'll turn it over to Doty Niedermeyer, our Senior Manager of Cultural Services, who will introduce the Chair of the Community Advisory Panel.
Mr. Price. Thank you for joining us both this evening.
Microphone. Oh, it's on. Thank you.
You're ready to go.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and council. We are here tonight to seek council's approval for the 2024 Community Grants Program as recommended by the Community Grants Advisory Panel and endorsed by the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. I would like to introduce Stephen Price, Member of the Community Grants Advisory Panel and the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, who will give you an overview of the work that was accomplished and the funding recommendations.
Thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Doty, and thank you for the time, Mayor and council. Really appreciate it. So, we wanted to give just a quick overview of the grant process and the recommendations you're about to vote on. Each year, the advisory panel is tasked with making recommendations for both the arts and culture as well as community and social service grants. In the transition in this past year from the committee form of our panel to the panel form, I'm pleased to report that all of the former members of the committee stayed with the panel and that they're actually quite delightful humans, to be honest. They come from a background from the arts and culture, from social services, from finance, and it was both a pleasure and an honor to work with them. And actually, several are here tonight to witness this presentation. So, there's nine members, and I'd like to thank them for their hard work. So, moving on, an overview of the Community Grants Program applicants. The applications that the district receives are really quite diverse, not-for-profits, organizations, and they deliver really vital and important services as well as enrich the culture of West Vancouver. As you can see, these organizations provide services from food security, partnering with Indigenous youth, combating seniors' isolation, and of course, all of the arts, music, dance, and you can see the photo of the youth band, one of my favorites, on the slide here as well. So, the budget, and this is, in some ways, the cause for much celebration here tonight, the budget that was allocated was $331,530, and that includes, for the public in attendance, a $40,000 increase over last year's budget, which we really wanted to thank, Mayor and council, in the process of your budgeting, for providing these additional funds this year. I know myself, last year, it was a real big challenge to allocate these funds, and it was less challenging this year. We felt that much more of the needs that were articulated by the grant applicants were able to be covered. We had to make fewer... It was a barn burner to second a presentation. My goodness, I didn't realize.
Now, this, I've got to tell you, having been in this seat for many years, this isn't first.
I guess we all leave. Is that fire drill? I'm a teacher, so follow me.
Okay. You gotta go.
I'm a teacher.
Why not?
Come back, I hope. Well, that's a first. Hope this doesn't happen frequently. Is there a little emergency button over there that you hit?
Abort.
Well, for those who may be tuned in over the internet, we had a little fire alarm, but it appears to have been a false alarm. So, we'll go back to our presentation. Mr. Price, thank you.
We'll pick it up right where we left off.
Thank you.
So, we were about to talk about the split of funding between... Of the $331,000 that was allocated, and the panel decided on a split of $33... was allocated, and the panel decided on a split of 33% for arts and culture and 67% for community and social services. That was basically purely a reflection of the applicants we were receiving, so that's as close as a division as we could make to just reflect the applications. I'd also point out that the local to global youth initiative grants are also accepted across the year. They're not reflected here. We allocated $3,500 to those grants, and that's based on previous year's demand, and we look at that closely and hope that demand actually goes up over time. Moving on to the arts and culture and sort of what came in each of those buckets. Arts and culture received $108,000 approximately. We had two new applicants to this program. Twenty-three applicants applied and 23 were funded. For the community and social services, $220,000 approximately were allocated. We had 44 grant applications from 41 different organizations, and seven new-to-the-program submitted applications. Thirty-six of those organizations were recommended to receive funding. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Thanks very much. Thank you for your service to the community. It's appreciated very much. Are there any questions for members of council? I'll ask Counselor Watt.
Yes, just going back to where we left off on here. Thank you, Stephen and Doty. And I also just want to say, having sat on the Community Grants Committee through last year and still interacting with you through the ACAC, I can't thank you enough for the work you do and all the others. It really is fantastic. So, on that note, I'd like to recommend that the recommendations by the Community Grants Advisory Panel endorsed by the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for the 2024 Community Grants Program grant allocations attached as Appendix A to the report titled "2024 Community Grants: Recommendations, Arts, Culture and Heritage and Community and Social Services Grants," dated April 18, 2024, from the Senior Manager of Cultural Services, be approved.
Thank you. Counselor Gambioli, thank you.
And thank you to you as well and to everyone else on the committee who's here and who isn't here tonight. It's a lot, a lot of work, and you've really refined the processes this year and last year, so thank you so much for all of your expertise and efforts.
You're here. Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll call a question. All in favor? Contrary, the motion's carried. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, Proposed Official Community Plan Amendment. And I believe there may be one or two people this evening. We'll have the staff presentation.
No, we do have a staff presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Here we go. So, it's a fairly brief staff presentation. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers of the public. For consideration tonight is a proposed development project for 14 Glenmore Drive. Here you can see the site outlined in purple on the aerial image on the top right of the screen there. It's a fairly large site, about 20, approximately 20,000 square feet in size. It's zoned right now for multifamily dwellings, RM4 zoning, and is directly adjacent to the east, rather, from Collingwood School, which is directly behind the site right now. And then there is a mix of housing in the area right now, ranging from duplexes to single-family dwellings to multiplexes. And you can see the aerial image on the bottom right of the screen there showing the existing site a little bit closer in. It has an existing two-story, four-plex housing complex there currently, and in fact, to the north and to the south directly, there are also four-plexes on those two adjacent sites as well. So, the proposal is to rezone the site from the existing RM4 zoning to a new comprehensive development or CD zone to allow for three duplex buildings. And you can see a rendering of the proposed duplexes on the bottom of the screen there. The duplexes are proposed as two stories with a basement, and the entire project is being proposed as a single strata rather than three individual duplex strata unit, or duplex buildings, rather. The proposed floor error ratio, or FAR, is approximately .7, and the average size of each unit is proposed to be just under 3,800 square feet in size. And the height and setbacks are comparable to other single-family limits within those types of zones throughout the district. Here you can see site plan showing the proposal. One thing that's different with this proposal is that, in working with the applicant, the applicant has agreed to dedicate a portion of the site as new laneway. So, you can see those areas at the northern edge of the site and at the rear of the site in the tan or the brown color on the site plan. What that would do is it would allow for vehicle access to come off of the rear lane rather than coming off of Glenmore Drive, and that allows for improved front yard landscaping, a new sidewalk along Glenmore to be introduced, and additional parallel parking along Glenmore Drive to be introduced. Also, just in terms of onsite parking, what's proposed is an internal, six interior garage spaces, and then six additional tandem spaces in front of the garages, and then, so for a total of 12 residential parking stalls, and then three additional visitor stalls on top of that, so 15 onsite parking stalls in total. Just in terms of relevant policy, the project is being considered under official community plan or OCP Policy 2.1.3 that encourages duplex development generally across the district in existing detached residential areas, and specifically allows consideration of site-specific rezoning applications to allow for duplex development. The project does meet the district's sustainable building policy with the requirement to either meet step, a higher step than was required when the application was submitted, and the applicant, application responds to the district's public amenity policy with the applicant offering a community amenity contribution of just over $200,000. As well, if the project was approved, the project would be required to pay applicable development cost charges. The applicant did host two different neighborhood meetings, so that there was one prior to when the application was submitted in September of last year, and then one more recently in December of last year, once the formal application was submitted. A number of neighbors attended both of those meetings. Generally, the written correspondence that we had seen to date had been generally supportive with some concerns mostly focused on traffic and parking and pedestrian safety issues, with the site being located in such close proximity to Collingwood School. There are during pickup and drop-off times congestion issues in the area today that exist in the neighborhood. And then more recently, council has received a petition from local neighbors and may have seen that with the council correspondence. That petition was signed by a number of local neighbors on Glenmore Drive, and one thing they were asking for was a reduction in the density to .5 FAR. And then three other things that they were seeking were more broader area-wide improvements, so the one being extending the proposed sidewalks so that it extends on the east side of Glenmore Drive for the entire block, as well considering traffic calming things like speed humps to reduce speeding on Glenmore Drive. And then finally, the request to create a task force that would include representatives from Collingwood School, district staff, and local residents to deal with issues related to the Collingwood School site in terms of noise and parking and pedestrian safety. And I guess just with those broader area-wide requests for improvement, I think that's something that council could consider to direct staff to look into and review and report back on, and could even be done separate from consideration of this development application. So, I just thought I'd summarize those tonight. So, to conclude, we are recommending that council give first reading to the proposed bylaws and set the date for public hearing as the project generally meets the relevant official community plan policies, and generally because the new housing would be family-friendly in an existing family-friendly neighborhood that's close to schools and recreation opportunities in the neighborhood. So, thanks and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much. Any questions from Ms. Maguire, from members of council? Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Just a little question about the requests, I guess, from the community about a task force around the school's safety. You know, I do understand we've had a number of complaints about that around the Collingwood School. Can you tell me if this is not a common behavior around most of the schools in West Vancouver?
Through the Merritt Council, my understanding, you know, obviously I'd want to check with engineering to confirm this, is that this is a common problem anywhere where schools exist across the lower mainland. And specifically, though, with this school, it is K to 12, and it is a private school, so that, my understanding is issues like that can be exacerbated in those situations. But yes, it is a very common occurrence that pickup and drop-off times around school sites within residential neighborhoods are generally quite congested and do have these issues. They're very common to those areas.
And I, this is probably an engineering question, but do you know if vertical deflectors, speed bumps could actually be installed in the area?
Whether or not the council could consider directing staff to review that and look into it?
Yeah, I guess that's ultimately what it comes after, but...
Yes, that's definitely something that council could direct staff to review in the context of this localized area around the school, and to review that in the context of other traffic calming initiatives throughout the district to come back and see what implementation would look like for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snyder.
Yes, so I just sort of follow up on that. I guess just more so for my benefit confirming. So, the sidewalk issue that was raised in the letter that you're referencing was asking for the sidewalk to go all the way from the Baden Powell Trail all the way to Morven, if I'm not mistaken. Is that something that, I mean, I know that this proposal is being proposed, obviously just for this, the frontage of the one proposal here. The rest of it would be subject to the municipality or the district approving sidewalk. Now, would it make sense, I mean, from my understanding of the neighborhood and knowing the area quite well, a lot of the other units along that stretch of the road there are also probably nearing end of life, and it would make sense to me that consideration of the full sidewalk may not be the wisest way of spending money until such developments? Is that sort of the normal course of developing the sidewalk improvements?
Yeah, through the Merritt Council, that would be. We would typically consider sidewalk improvements directly in front of developments of this scale and not really much further, you know, from the site itself. But if council wished to direct staff to look into implementing sidewalks in the area that has been requested, that could be something that could be done. And in fact, if council wished to look at the community amenity contribution that's associated with this rezoning to use some of those funds for those different improvements, that's something that council could definitely direct staff to do.
But that's outside the scope of the proposal, per se. It's sort of a, it's sort of a, an addition to or to the proposal that's being presented?
Through the Merritt Council, yes, that's correct. It's not something that's directly being considered to be a direct cost to the developer as far as that sidewalk extension.
Okay, and what the laneway that's being contributed as well here by the proposal, can you tell me what benefits of the district acquiring that laneway are for, I mean, it makes a lot of sense for the actual development. That way, the traffic is routed right off of Glenmore to begin with for residents and stuff, but is there, is there a bigger sort of picture item of the benefits the district gets from that laneway?
Yeah, through the Merritt Council, that's definitely something we were thinking about, is if, for instance, some of those other sites that you had mentioned in the local area may experience redevelopment in future, it would be a good opportunity. The lane, the new northern lane that accesses the rear of the sites could be used for those other sites to then extend the lane so that it creates, creates a continuous lane that would then have vehicle access coming off the lane and not off of Glenmore.
Okay, and sorry, just one more question. I don't know if you know the answer. I had been in some communication with the individuals who had presented the correspondence with the petition. I never, I didn't get a confirmed answer. Do you know if the, because I know that the proposal was originally to have the six units and six suites as well, and that's no longer the proposal, it's just the six units, and I just wonder whether or not those that signed the petition were aware that that had subsequently been changed, and whether or not anybody had reached out with further comments?
I should have mentioned that in the presentation. Thanks for the opportunity, yes. So, the applicant, that's one of the changes, when they held public engagement of their own, one of the concerns was more about parking and traffic exacerbation for existing issues. And so, one of the change that the applicant made was to remove the suites from the proposal. So, rather than having six duplex units, each with a suite, as was originally proposed, the current design includes six duplex units. One thing that's important to note is that the CD, the proposed CD zone, though, does allow secondary suites in it. So, if a future owner wanted to come back and legalize a suite in the basement, they could do, but the applicant is not proposing to bring forward the suites at this time with the consolidated development application.
But would the addition of those suites still have to come back for approval?
They would not have to come back to council for approval. They would likely require a staff review process to come back.
However, if the applicant was prepared to enter into a Section 219 covenant, that would cover off?
That could be something, or if council wished to make an amendment to remove suites as a permitted use from this CD zone, that could be done as well, and I'd have to think about the, because now you're considering first reading. If you wanted to consider that, it would likely be something you would want to do now because it's a change to land use prior to setting the public hearing date. I mean, there's the alternative of doing it through a 219 covenant as well would be a different option that could be potentially done then after, after hearing from the public at the public hearing. So, that's, yeah.
I think we should hear from the public, so Counselor Cassidy.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, this is perhaps a bit of a historic, history conversation. So, the big issue, I was up visiting the site and drove all around and looked at sidewalks. Very fascinating day I had. So, one of the big issues, of course, in this neighborhood, and I quite understand, by the way, is the amount of traffic generated by the parents who insist upon dropping their children off at school. And I don't know if it was last week or the week before, or whatever, that we were talking about the concept of walking school buses. So, when Collingwood School was approved, there must obviously have been the thought that this is going to generate a tremendous amount of traffic. So, could conversations not be had now with Collingwood School to pick certain sites along the route to the school that they could use as drop-off centers for their students? Because the entire way up Stephen's Drive is sidewalk. Those children could walk for blocks to the school as opposed to generating the kind of traffic issues that they do within the immediate vicinity. Because this property is not the only one that has been sighted as such along the way. Any new development that's coming in, as the neighborhood becomes gentrified, as time goes by, they're going to also be facing exactly the same issue, and perhaps it's one that we address now, and the conversations need to be had, not with the developer, but with the school that is creating the problem. Because the district has provided, historically speaking, through the years, sidewalks to get up to the school and beyond. It's heavily sidewalked. So, I think we need to be having a decidedly serious conversation with the school and with the school to their parents. So, that's all I have to say on the subject.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Watt.
Yeah, so I appreciate that the applicant has removed the basement suites. And also, I just want a clarification on the RM4 zoning. That zoning technically allows for rooming houses, senior supportive or assisted living or mixed use with daycare?
Through the Merritt Council, Watt, my understanding is yes. I'd have to look up the zone right now to confirm that, but I believe that's the case, yes.
Yeah, it's quite an anomaly. So, what they're proposing to put in certainly would be, you know, more in character with the neighborhood than what somebody else could do with that site. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Counselor Lambert.
Getting back to this point of the secondary suites, if we were to proceed with this and if we want to remove secondary suites as a permitted use, would that just apply to the recommendation regarding the zoning bylaw?
Through the Merritt Council, that's correct. So, if you wanted to provide direction to modify the first reading bylaw as presented, you could provide that as a motion to remove secondary suites as a permitted use.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now, I did communicate today with a few people who live in the neighborhood that might have been left with the impression, because I said council was considering setting this for a public hearing, and I just want to see if anyone, any member of the public is here tonight. I don't want anyone to feel discouraged from addressing council, even though tonight is only to set a public hearing. But I think, I think we would waive. There is one gentleman here. Yes, sir, would you? But I think we would waive, there is one gentleman here. Yes, sir, would you?
Can I address the council?
Yes, you can, sir.
Thank you for this, I guess, out of order.
It's a little out of order, but you know, that's okay.
I do appreciate it. And in fact, I think it will actually clarify, I am actually the submitter of the petition. My name is Emile Fung. I live on that street, 17 Glenmore Drive, which is directly opposite the 14 Glenmore Drive lot in question. And I wanted, first of all, to clarify, I think there may be a misconception. We are actually not NIMBYs. The 20 people who signed, we are actually very pro-development. And we are actually very welcoming of the fact that Sterling Developments is putting this development together. As, I'm sorry...
Ms. McGuire.
Ms. McGuire mentioned, you know, that we are actually trying to address a more overarching issue. And if I can just address the four points of our petition, one by one, and see how they actually relate to the overarching issue versus the 14 Glenmore issue. In the petition number one, we actually set out to actually say there should be a uniform treatment for the building of duplexes in our area. And that's why we said, being we live in RD1 duplexes, the FAR for that RD1 situation as it exists today is 0.5. So, we're saying, well, why is somebody getting exemption when we're not? In fact, we would be very happy, as owners on that street, to have all of us, including the RM4 conversions ultimately. You're right, we live in an area that needs to be gentrified. You see the age of the residents behind us, and...
They all look very young.
Yeah.
I would say.
Yeah, I'll lose all my support by saying that. But quite honestly, we understand. And we understand also the overarching issues of density. So, we are not against density. I want to make that very, very clear, because I think that was a misconception that some of you may have received. What we'd like to have, though, is uniform treatment, meaning that RM4 plus the RD1s should also be availed to this new CD87 standard. So that then, from an OCP perspective, we can then look at our neighborhood in its entirety and say, well, what is it going to look like and what are the things that we should be doing to address any of the issues that you will hear from other members, probably in a later public hearing, regarding the issues that are coming up with Collingwood School. So, that's, actually, we would like to amend our petition one, given that at the time, we didn't know there was a CD87 forthcoming. But now that we do, we would like council to actually consider, you know, there's a map there of all the various residences that are RM4 and RD1, to give them the same treatment. And then that, therefore, we have a very, very uniform view and a consistent view of how to deal with issues going forward, rather than having it being ad hoc one by one. And to your point, Scott, you know, I mean, sidewalks and everything, you know, do we need to do this one at a time? Or does it make more sense, as this councillor, sorry, I can't read your name...
Councillor Watt?
Councillor Watt was suggesting is to be proactive in the process.
That's time, sir.
And make it. So, number one, that's the first petition. Number two and number three...
Can I just stop you for a second?
Yes.
I'm going to let you go over time, but Councillor Thompson has a question.
After you've finished.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, sure. Number two and number three are quite simple. We're asking for that sidewalk extension. It's actually on the west side, not on the east side. And also, we're asking for speed bumps. These are very, very sort of standard issues, and as somebody mentioned, they happen within school zones. We're definitely in a school zone, and right now, we have very, very fast cars with N license plates on them just zipping by.
Sure, sir, I just want to tell you, I think we are all very sympathetic to those concerns.
Thank you, sir. So, what I would like to see, actually, is that as the developer is being, I don't know whether you consider it generous, but at least I appreciate the offer, the $206,000 that is being put on the table, can that be applied towards these measures and not go into the general coffers? I understand that's asking a lot of council because you have your budgetary needs.
Sir, it's a very fair request, and yes, it can.
Right, okay. Then I would like that to be considered, you know, I don't, not as part of this application, but by council in general, and I hope that will take place. So, that takes us to number four in the petition, which is there has been a break of, let's say, trust, transparency, ever since the school has been built. There were certain representations that were made with respect to noise, that, you know, there would be no noise, you know, beyond extracurricular hours, six o'clock, noise, parking, and so on and so forth. All these issues that, you know, are very familiar to you in terms of a school.
Sir, I think you're speaking to a group of people who you'll find are very sympathetic to your concerns.
Thank you.
We are going to set the public hearing tonight.
Right.
And because we have this time limit, and I've let you go over, but I do want you to leave here, understanding, we get the message. I personally have some thoughts, and we are meeting with Collingwood, the powers to be within the Collingwood School, and we are looking for their help and cooperation to address a number of issues.
Maybe we can take this up in the substance.
We absolutely can, sir. Councillor Thompson?
So, thank you. Yeah, and I do think a lot of your issues, I appreciate your proactiveness, but they are more to do with the school than the project. So, swinging it back to the project, because you mentioned something, and we are considering something this evening, this seems to be cropping up. Do you actually have an opposition of these suites having the ability to turn, sorry, these homes being able to have a suite at some time? Is that really a concern of yours?
I can't speak for the 20 individuals involved, because at the time that, you know, we were putting the petition together, these suites were still on the table. So, obviously, I'll have to go back to them to talk about it. I personally understand that densification is good, right, or is the prevailing trend. Our issue is, on the suites, is really coming down to the parking issue. We don't have public transit, you know. There is a bus up there, but, you know, it only runs every hour. So, we fully anticipate that these suites will have many cars in them. And right now, as it exists, you know, the residents are, you know, have more than two cars, some of them in the existing building, and they're all parked on the street. So, when you increase the number of residences, you know, in each one of these lots, and that's why I say there should be a very comprehensive view, once everybody gets the CD87 designation, well, then how, you know, how is then parking a portion? And I think that's a bigger issue. It's not an issue specific to 14 Glenmore, but it is an indicator of a trend, yes?
I agree with you. Thank you.
So, we can canvass that fully at the public hearing. And, sir, I would like to thank you for coming this evening and adding your thoughts. Thank you. I am now going to ask, oh, Councillor Watt, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. McGuire, actually. So, this is being done as a stratified property, so it's not being divided. So, if that was, how many single-family lots or duplex lots would exist? Would it be three?
Through the merits of Councillor Watt, I'd have to look at the site size and the zone to see what the minimum site size is under that zone with its designation as RM4.
That's true, yeah.
There, I can quickly look, sorry. I don't believe the site could be currently subdivided based on its current site size within the subdivision standards within the zone. But if you're talking about if it was to change to single-family zoning, then that, they're different to minimum site sizes depending on the zone that you're within.
This is a very unusual zone.
Yes, well, where I was going with that was not suggesting that it be divided. I'm just trying to understand if theoretically, this was, say, three sites that could house duplexes under the current new requirements, would they not still be allowed to put in basement suites, just theoretically, if it was three properties of that relative size?
If it was currently three properties, would they be able to have, like, two stories plus a basement suite, basically, on each lot?
But that would be single-family or duplexes with the basement?
Well, this one's a little bit different because it is the RM4 zoning, so that is more of a multi-family zone.
Right.
And so, it's a bit different. It does actually allow duplex and single-family, so in theory, it could be developed with those housing types too, but that would be sort of a lower form of housing.
Yeah, well, I'm not suggesting it. I'm just trying to figure out if we even could stipulate that there were no suites.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just for reference, the sites across the street are zoned for duplex, and the site size is there, I'd have to look into those and see maybe what a comparable kind of number of duplex units could fit on the sites to the, directly to the east. And I could report back at the public hearing on that.
Okay.
I think we should have this discussion at the public hearing, and I think the neighbors will give us some advice. I think they now understand it would be good to get advice on this if we're going to look at a more comprehensive zoning for the whole neighborhood. So, I would like to ask Councillor Cassidy if you would make the motions to get this rolling.
So, it is a rather lengthy reading. Would you like me to read each recommendation, or would you like me simply to state?
If you could just read the first, the, let me see.
I'll read them all.
To our corporate officer, can we have it, the motions as written?
We can certainly do the motions as written. I would just caution that for the two motions that we're setting a date, just so we can be clear what the date is when we get to that point. But the first three, I think we can do as written.
All right. To that end, I will state that the first three recommendations as written, please.
I apologize. They will have to be done one at a time, though.
All right. I take instruction extremely well. So, I will read each as written. Thank you very much. So, I recommend that the opportunities for consultation of a proposed official community plan amendment with persons, organizations, and authorities, as outlined in the April 22, 2024 report, and the senior community planner be endorsed to sufficient consultation for purposes of Section 475 of the Local Government Act.
Thank you. Is there a second, or Councillor Snyder? Thank you. Any discussion? Councillor Lambert, your...
No, my friendly amendment will be on the proposed zoning bylaw.
Thank you. I'll call a question. All those in favor, contrary, carried. The next, for the official community plan.
It is recommended that proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985, 2018, amendment bylaw number 5335, 2024, be read a first time.
Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Snyder. Call a question. All in favor, contrary, carried. Zoning bylaw.
It is recommended that proposed zoning bylaw number 4662, 2010, amendment bylaw number 5336, 2024, be read a first time.
Thank you. Councillor Snyder and Councillor Lambert has a...
Yes, and here I'd like to make the friendly amendment to remove the secondary suites as a permitted use in the zone.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Well, maybe just further to that, the reason for that is that the applicant has already offered to take the secondary suites out of the initial development application. But as Ms. McGuire has pointed out, that any owner, an initial owner, can install a secondary suite in any of those units right from day one. And as the residents have expressed, there's, again, a significantly increased parking load that comes with these secondary suites. Now, should anybody want to put in a secondary suite, and Ms. McGuire or Mr. Bailey can correct me if I'm wrong, but if this is removed and at a future date, somebody could also make, come forward and make an application for a secondary suite without it being as of right.
Thank you, Councillor Lambert. Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I just want to point, I wouldn't mind some more information on that and feedback from the public, because the issue doesn't seem to be density. I understand parking is, but there's 12 spots on site, is that right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen on site. And I'm not prepared to support you on that, just so you know, at this point.
Okay, but of course, the problem with that is that then that sets up a case in the public hearing. If not, you can't make that change at the public hearing. You either throw it out or you accept it.
But, Councillor Lambert, we could, council could request or require as part of the rezoning that a Section 219 covenant be entered into.
Or you could do that.
Yes, we could do it that way. And quite honestly, I think it is wise to listen to the community. I think we've had an excellent representative speak tonight. I'd like to hear their input on that. Councillor Cassidy?
So, I'm a bit, I don't know, I'm a bit sketchy about stating as to no secondary suites, because one of the things we have said is if you want density, where should we be putting density? But around schools. And of course, I do recognize, as I previously stated, this school has created major issues in and of itself in the area. But if you are a young family that moves into the neighborhood and a working family to pay for the unit, you may well want a nanny. You may well want your in-laws to move in for whatever reason, an income suite, or, some people like their in-laws, an income suite or such the like. So, you know, I'm hesitant on that one, quite frankly. And I am extremely sensitive to the issues to do with traffic in the neighborhood. But we have an opportunity now with this street, as the gentleman has previously stated, as other projects come forward, that we can build a street as it unfolds that really is going to be delightful and remarkable as each new project comes forward, if we just get the zoning in accordance with what would create that. But the secondary suites, the abolition of such, I don't know if I'm for it. Okay? Costs a lot of money, probably, to buy one of these, two married couple with children, two incomes, you're going to need a nanny. Or hopefully, some, or in-laws or your own parents who'll move in.
Now, for the members of the public, I am not going to tell you why all the members of council are having a smile tonight, because it would only be up to Councillor Cassidy to explain why she's discussing this.
Why everyone needs a nanny?
We'll just wait and see when she tells you why.
Why does everyone need a nanny, council?
All right. So, we were instructed as a council to, you know, increase the population in West Vancouver. So, my son moved in with his wife and two children, and then they had triplets on Friday.
So, she is now the proud grandma.
There you go.
Can you imagine five children under four?
And no, I'm not moving into a suite in their home. Thank you.
Why do you think that's a...
Yes, right.
A nanny, him on the basement.
Yeah.
Councillor Lambert, I'm not seeing a second to your motion. I hope you're not offended, but...
Yes.
No, there's no second.
Not at this point.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to call a question on the first reading. All those in favor, contrary, the motion is carried. And now we have the Councillor Cassidy for the official community plan public hearings.
Did I read the last one, the proposed zoning bylaw number 46?
Yes, you did.
I did do that. Thank you very much. All right. It is recommended that proposed official community bylaw, plan bylaw number 4985, 2018, amendment bylaw number 5335, 2024, and proposed zoning bylaw number 4662, 2010, amendment bylaw number 5336, 2024, be presented at a public hearing on June 18, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal...
June 17, sorry.
Oh, June the 17th, did I?
Yes.
Okay. June the 17, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal hall council chamber and via electronic communication facilities, WebEx video conferencing software, and that notice be given of the scheduled public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call a question. All in favor, contrary, carried. And finally...
Okay. That proposed development permit 23-100 be presented at a public meeting scheduled for June 17, at 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal council chamber via electronic communications facilities, WebEx video conferencing software, to be held concurrently with the public hearing scheduled for June 17, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal hall council chamber and via electronic communication facilities, WebEx video conferencing software, and that notice be given of the scheduled public meeting.
Thanks so much.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Call a question. All in favor, contrary, carried. Thanks very much. Thanks, Ms. McGuire. And item number six, the housing targets report. And Mr. Hawkins, are you going to give us a presentation? Ladies and gentlemen, thanks very much for joining us this evening. We look forward to your input at the public hearing. Thank you. Thanks very much.
I'm pretty good.
Good evening, you worship members of council. So, moving on to the next item, which is regarding the provincial housing targets, and specifically, the required six-month progress reports towards them. So, I'll begin by answering the question, which provincial bill is in question? There's obviously been a number. So, tonight, it is Bill 43. So tonight it is Bill 43, also known as the Housing Supply Act. This was the act which granted the Minister of Housing the authority to issue housing targets to municipalities in British Columbia. They're five-year targets, so running from 2024 through to 2028. And West Vancouver was one of the first 10 municipalities in the province to be issued them. So this will lead to annual reports every November. And then for year one and only year one, there is also a requirement for a six-month report. So I think of it as an interim report, if you like, which is the subject of the report in front of council tonight. So very briefly, it is not the other recent housing bills. These are not in question tonight. So council did commence consideration of one part of Bill 44 with a small-scale multi-unit housing a week ago. And towards the end of this year, there will be a new 20-year housing growth figure. By the end of the following year, a new OCPN zoning update. Bill 46 will allow us to make sure that development pays for itself. And Bill 47, transit-oriented areas is currently not applicable to West Van. So with respect to the Housing Supply Act, West Vancouver's five-year housing targets are shown on the chart in the screen. They came into effect on October the 1st, so year one, 220 net new units. And then you can follow the line chart as it moves up to year five, 1,432 net new units, two points. The figures here are cumulative, so 1,432 means the total units across those five years, not for any single year. And the second point is that the province has communicated these to be the minimum expectations. So there is a report, the appendix A provides the data that the province requested. They'll be monitoring things in a two-step process. So the first is whether municipalities are meeting those thresholds, those minimum thresholds. So the question here is whether West Van has met any of the individual targets. And the method the province is using is net new, so that's occupancy permits that have been granted minus demolitions. Should the target not be met, so step two is if needed, the ministry will review if the municipality is making sufficient efforts. So, you know, are we doing what we can do? So examples would be council has been making approvals, council is using supportive housing policies or is directing staff to prepare plans and initiatives that could increase housing supply, as opposed to, for example, council defeating applications or not directing staff to plan for new housing. And then also, are there any external analyses? So if there are factors which West Vancouver cannot control, so some examples would be the level of construction activity, any shortages within that industry, cost of financing, so interest rates, and then anything else in the market regarding the level of liquidity and velocity of money in the housing system. So this is new legislation. It does build in compliance. So the minister will determine if West Vancouver has either met the new target or made satisfactory progress towards it. So part A is the number and part B is the direction, if you like. If the minister deems that West Vancouver is not compliant, there are a lot of words in the act regarding the steps that could be taken. But in summary, it would be to appoint an advisor where West Van would have to open the doors and open the books, if you like, and they would review our policies, our practices, our general approach to development. Based on that review, that advisor could direct West Vancouver to amend bylaws, issue permits, and should West Vancouver not follow that direction, then the province could recommend through the lieutenant governor in the legislature to enforce that directive and compel the district. So in terms of the number, the first metric, based on the methodology, 56 units were completed within this first six-month period. So that's October 1st last year through March 31st this year, pardon me. So 56 units were awarded or granted occupancy permit. 16 units have been demolished, so the net new figure is 40, four zero units. Forty units represents 18% of the overall year one target of 220 units. So obviously, that's less than what we could, you know, consider an interim target. 50% would have been 110 of those 220 units. The province also has provided guidance, so it's not binding, but guidance in terms of the composition or the distribution of units within those targets. And West Van has met the prorated targets for the larger unit types, so three-bedroom plus units. But we are short on both rental, the overall ownership pool, and then also those smaller units of two bedrooms and less. In terms of the direction piece that the province is monitoring, they also require us to submit data in terms of permits that are in-stream within that same six-month period. It's a relatively short period, obviously six months for permits, but between October 1st last year and March 31st this year, 276 units are under construction, so they have been issued BP's, that means building permits, and a further 40 units have been issued DP's or development permits, so they're still pending building permit application. And for those less familiar, development permits are a step before building permits in certain circumstances. So for example, if there are environmental constraints or concerns we want to mitigate against, or if there are particular form and character or aesthetic requirements for a particular place. So in terms of what is in-stream within this six-month period, the issued building permits for 32 single-family basement suites and coach house units, these could well add to the year one target of 220 units or certainly hopefully towards year two, if not year one, because these projects are relatively small, so the construction time is shorter. However, in terms of the other numbers on this screen, they are not likely to contribute to year one targets. Of the issued building permits, 244 of them applied to apartment units, which typically take, you know, multi-year, more than one year to construct, given the scale and complexity of construction. And those 40 units which have been issued DP's, staff are still waiting for the detailed construction level drawings, so they still need building permit issuance in addition to construction time. So something that the province's methodology doesn't account for is anything that's happened before this six-month reporting period, which staff have provided to the province or is included in the report template, simply because projects take longer than six months to complete. And in fact, things that were in-stream before the start date of October the 1st are more likely to complete within the five-year target window. So before October the 1st last year, building permits had been issued for 195 net new units, so these are under construction. And also, building permits had been received and are under review for a further 70 net new units. In terms of the development permit stage, 283 units have been issued development permits, but we're still waiting for the building permit drawings to be received. And then the final figure on the bottom right, there are also an additional 183 units that are currently under review. But in this case, obviously, there's less certainty. The applicant may withdraw, the project may be revised, council may not approve it. So obviously, a lot of numbers on that slide to avoid anyone trying to do math in their head. It totals 731 units, so these could contribute to future reporting years within the five-year horizon, or perhaps after that in post 2028, with the caveats I've described, if they're completed, if the applicant wishes to see them through, and pending things like council approvals and market conditions. But the point is that even if everything we know based on the universe of what is in-stream either since October the 1st or before October the 1st last year, the total would still be less than the five-year provincial target of 1,432 net new units. So that does raise the question of both medium and longer-term housing supply. So council certainly has opportunities to address housing needs through ongoing initiatives. Most given Monday nights, Director Bailey and my colleague, Ms Maguire, do present development applications for council's consideration. Things that are approved this year could well be completed and occupied within the five-year window. In addition to those larger area-wide initiatives, so most notably the local area plan for Ambleside and the plan for Cypress Village, these are both in process and Cypress in particular as well advanced. And in referencing those, I do want to be clear that I'm not in any way suggesting these are provincially driven. These are very much, you know, Made-in-West Vancouver projects that this council and previous councils have committed to because there's a longstanding acknowledgement that Ambleside has some older buildings that could be regenerated, that there's a desire for a very vibrant mixed-use waterfront village. And for Cypress Village, there's a longstanding desire for there to be a commercial hub above the highway and for it to be built in a way that preserves as much of the hillside as possible. So I'm not tying this to the provincial, recent provincial directions, but they do have that extra dimension now. And particularly as we look longer term, as mentioned, Bill 44 will also require a 20-year housing needs target by the end of this year. So these Made-in-West Vancouver projects, which already have been committed to by council, would certainly go a long way to contributing towards that. In addition to future initiatives, that can also contribute, these new and emerging provincial directions, so an obvious example being the future Taylorway local area plan, which will include Park Royal North, as well as the provincially required OCP and zoning bylaw updates by the end of next year. So in conclusion, and this is legislatively required, staff are recommending that council receive, publish and submit the housing report to the Minister of Housing. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Thompson?
I did have one question. I noticed you put in a demolition of 16 units. I didn't realise we were actually counting, is this how we're doing it? Whatever we demolish works against our housing targets?
Through your worship, yes. I mean, the methodology is that, which is directed by the province, so their approach to identifying growth is two things. It's not gross, it's just not what has been approved. It's net, and their approach to net is how many occupancy permits subtract whatever's been demolished in the same period.
So with the 16 units?
So we demolished, were they inhabited?
I don't have the details. I mean, a house could have been vacant, obviously, before it was demolished, so I don't have the occupancy status of them. But yeah, in general, what we're talking about in this first six-month window is generally the replacement of building stock under current zoning. So we're really talking about a house coming down and typically being replaced with a house plus a basement suite and plus a coach house, pardon me.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Gambioli?
Thank you for that report. So my questions, I have three questions, I think, here. September 30th, so we don't have any chance of meeting the target for the end of September. So, you know, how nasty do you think the provincial government will be right away?
Through your worship, similar to conversations last week about a different provincial act, this is entirely new legislation. There is no precedent I can refer to. Nothing has been through the courts. So our intent has been to comply with every reporting requirement. And it was my professional responsibility to advise council that there are recourse measures or compliance measures that the province could choose to enact. Beyond that, it would be very speculative.
I wonder about, for example, the development that we approved on Clyde, the studio units, where are we at with that and where would that, that would fit in with the, obviously, not anytime soon, would it be built? But is that one of the in-stream ones that you included?
Correct. Through your worship, councillor Gambioli, that would figure in the province's desire to understand what projects have been issued a development permit but are yet to be issued a building permit, because my understanding, Mr Bailey can confirm if I'm wrong, is that the applicant has not submitted building permits and currently is not pursuing that.
Through the mayor, I'll clarify a little bit of a nuance. So they have submitted a building permit, but they are not acting on it and they've let it expire.
What? It's expired?
The building, the owners have let the building permit expire.
Yeah. They've made the choice to not proceed with that building permit at this time.
Well, maybe the provincial government should have a little conversation with them. Okay, so my last question is, how about the in-stream developments? There were a lot of numbers there, but the in-stream developments, how do they fill the need for affordable housing and rental housing and whatnot? Like, are we going to have a breakdown of that for the, for the larger numbers you talked about?
Yeah, through your worship, so the appendix to the report is really a series of numbers. It's staff completing the province's required tables. But for example, when I spoke to building permits that have been issued, so it's really for the private sector to deliver them, that does include, for example, 156 rental apartments at 2195 Gordon. It also includes 88 units at, on Sixth Street, so that's Executive on the Park. So it does include multifamily units, which include both rental as well as those typically smaller unit sizes.
At some point, are we, are we going to have to, you know, push ahead with more projects that relate to rental and affordable ahead of STRADA, for example? You know, at some point, we're going to have to juggle those numbers to meet the requirements.
Through your worship, yes. It's a bit of a nuanced answer. So the 1,432 was the net overall five-year figure. The province did also provide guidance regarding the composition. If we round up to 1,500, roughly 500 units would be STRADA, 500 market rental and 500 non-market rental. So that is the provincial guidance. So this is very much about increasing supply and shaping that supply. Council will have opportunities, whether they be rezoning applications or things like area plans, to enable a broader range of housing types, tenures and affordabilities.
Thank you. Councillor Lambert?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a clarification, I think you've made it already, that the 276 units that were under construction, that's mostly Gordon Avenue and Executive Park? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And in terms of some of the medium to long-term possibilities, I didn't see it referenced because they aren't active projects right now, but BC Housing has been promoting projects both on the Englewood site and in Clehany, on the redevelopment of their own property, which would add significantly to, you know, to the affordable housing stock in West Vancouver. And both of those projects are, have gone kind of dark, would seem to me, and it's a little bit ironic, that West Vancouver is being asked to meet certain housing targets, whereas our erstwhile provincial partners don't seem to be terribly active on those particular files, but maybe you know more than I do about that.
Through your worship, and again, Director Bailey can jump in if I miss anything, but the province is looking for publicly accessible information and it's tying it to permits. So obviously, what the projects I've spoken to or the numbers behind those projects, we've issued a building permit, we've issued a development permit, or we've received an application. So that's the focus of those versus potential conversations council may be having or interests you may be aware of.
Okay, fair comment. Those projects I've referred to are outside of that realm.
Okay. But councillor Lambert, I think you make an excellent point, and I would ask if you would consider making a motion after this motion to request a meeting with BC Housing on those two, on those two subject properties. It is time we get an answer from them. Councillor Watt?
How do they, and I know you probably don't have an answer to this, but I still find this entire process fascinating. How on earth are they going to chase down every municipality in the province and force these buildings? You know, with the price of borrowing money right now, the cost of materials and labour, I just don't know how any municipality is going to meet these expectations. So I think there's going to be a whole new line of new government employees chasing people down across the province wrapping knuckles. It just, the math doesn't work.
There's definitely a problem. I mean, we've got a perfect example where council approved a building that would add significantly to the rental housing stock, and the owner of the property has let the building permit lapse.
Can't force them to build.
Right there. Councillor Cassidy?
So I don't really expect an answer. Probably I'm just venting. So given the fact that the North Shore, with, I think, one exception, has not voted NDP, do you think they have any actual conception of what life is like on the North Shore? That you don't just look at the boots on the ground or the bottoms in the backs in the chairs, you have to look at that traffic that's coming from Pemberton, Whistler, Squamish, all the way through here, that if you do not hit, I'm just venting, so you gentlemen can agree, that's the best thing to do. That if you don't leave West Vancouver to go over the Second Hours Bridge by 2:15 in the afternoon, you're going to crawl. And if you're trying to get to the North Shore from in the Burnaby, Kew, Quitlam, wherever, you'd better be over here, probably around 8 o'clock in the morning, or you're going to crawl. We do not have the infrastructure to support a substantially greater population on the North Shore. Our bridges are aged, they cannot carry what we've got at the present Our bridges are aged, they cannot carry what we've got at the present moment. We have a hospital that as much as they want to improve it, if you want most major works to be done on yourself, they're sending you over to VGH or St. Paul's Hospital. So, I mean, what they're proposing is totally and utterly illogical. So perhaps if we do force whomever it is to come and have a little audit of us, they might actually realize what life is like on the North Shore. And I'm not ever one for just blind compliance. I know that's, I'm not criticizing yourselves, but I'm not for this at all, and I do appreciate your report, I do, but I'm not going to vote for it. And I'm not going to vote for anything to do with Bill Forty-four or whatever other ones they like to throw our way. I'd like them to come and say, you know, scold us, do their audit report on us, and then realize the facts of life on the North Shore. That's where we are.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I'm not going to ask our staff to respond.
No, no, I didn't expect a response, and I didn't ask for one, so there you go.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. And then I'm going to ask councillor Lambert if he'd make a motion.
Yeah, actually, just because we're making comments and saying things that don't need to be responded to, I actually really appreciate this report, first in the six months, but I actually appreciate responding to a housing target demand, even, you know, we're one of the first ten. And this is telling a story about the reality. In fact, this morning, this morning's news is all about how these municipalities are not meeting their targets or projected to be because of these complexities. And the ones coming on the market are things that were approved three to five years ago. And I think when you start to see this municipality after municipality, we don't have to come out guns-a-blazing, they're going to see and understand. And I actually just love the quote that Mr. Hawkins said about, you know, we are actually coming up with our own maiden West Van solutions as opposed to ones mandated by the target. Given the time and the procedures that we do have in place, we will more than amply meet all the demands. And I think it's actually a good news story and a great report to send forward, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Gambioli, just before you speak, could I ask councillor Lambert to put a motion on the floor, and then if you could second it and speak to it? Councillor Lambert.
Mayor Sager, I apologize for the introduction, just to, pardon me, just to let you know, one member of the public has signed up to address this item.
I guess, I can guess who it is. Really? Okay. Gary, come on up. I'm going to ask you to be really quick tonight. Yes, we know what you're, we do appreciate your attendance and...
Cassidy has given me a big opportunity here. She started a population growth here in West Van, which is actually what we need, because we've been hollowed out for the last fifty years. It's what the province didn't realize, I've spoken to some of the people assisted the province in coming up with their criteria for West Van and others, is they didn't consider the fact that we had hollowed out for the last fifty years. So our population increased one-sixth of the average of Metro. So we've lost generations of kids. So between your kids of just being born and forty-six, there's a big gap, because all those other people can't live here, so I hope yours can. But the other issue that was made here is we do need West, we need West Van solutions because we're not sustainable. You've seen that working through your budgets, there's no money unless you get it from development, which is your main source. So we did need West Van solutions, but I don't see them, because the fourteen hundred, if we assume that there's three people per unit, make it four, your population growth is less than one percent. It's less, again, it's weight not meeting the rest of the metro of Vancouver. And so we're not replacing all the people and brains that we've left, we don't, we're not creating a future, we don't have the workers for the older people that helped live in place. So we really have a crisis in West Vancouver that we need to address that goes way beyond the province's requirement. And so councillor Cassidy mentioned, I think, a really important thing. She said we should have suites in those units around the school. I think the schools are nodes that the province is missing. We should have density around the schools. If you see the traffic outside the schools, they disappear if you have people that walk to school. And I know that because we went to the place, always the families would come to walk, kids walking to school, they're within two blocks. So I think we're missing a huge opportunity by only, for instance, looking at the main routes, Marine Drive and Taylor. The schools were set up a hundred years ago to really create nodes for us. And so that's where we should be putting density, just like we are around the transportation hubs, which we started talking to, my group started talking to transit in two thousand and two, and they weren't doing it. They only started doing it in early two thousands. So I think we should really get a West Van solution around schools that we're missing, and there's huge communities there, you pop in a little store and a little whatever, and you have a community that don't have to commute to all the other busy places. And the traffic that we have now imported from other places on the Second Nowras, we referred to, that didn't exist before, it's because people can't live here. And so you can't get staff and can't pay for them. So I really encourage a more proactive solution for a West Van solution. And as I think one of our platters had said in one of the open meetings, it's about density and height, in some cases, to produce those economic units that people will buy, and we can recover our lost generations and provide for councillor Cassidy's kids for home.
With that, I'm going to thank you for your comments. You are very consistent in your messaging. Councillor Lambert.
Yes, Mayor Sager, I think there's actually, there's two motions here. One is the, is the one prepared by staff that recommends submitting the report, which we have to do. And then there's a second motion about getting together with B.C. Housing and maybe the Ministry of Municipal Affairs to pursue projects of joint interest where they have already established.
Thank you.
So can we do that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so...
We'll do two motions separately, but if we could do the first as written would be great.
Okay, you don't want me to read it out, just as written? I'll read it out.
Sure.
Recommend that the District of West Vancouver's six-month housing target progress report attached as appendix A to the report dated April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, titled Housing Target Progress Report Six-Month Report, be received, published on the district's website, and submitted to the B.C. Minister of Housing as per legislative requirements.
Thank you. Councillor Gambioli.
Yes, and I will second that, and just say that, from earlier, I was about to say that I agree with everything that councillor Thompson said. And again, you know, I don't see how we could vote against this report unless we think that the information is wrong. It's just a report with the facts, so, you know, and we, you know, just to follow up on councillor Cassidy, we, you know, traffic is an issue because we haven't built more housing for forty years in this town. And we haven't built new housing for people who can live here and work here for forty years, and that's why we have this problem. That's why we have this traffic problem. And we, you know, that's just a fact, the traffic is related to the fact we haven't built housing, so.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli. Councillor Watt.
Yeah, since there has been a little bit of venting, mostly from this side of the table, I just want to share an anecdote from about a year ago, and it's something that I've been, whenever I think about it, I'm seething. And again, this has nothing to do with our wonderful planning team on the other side of the table, but I was attending a conference back in February of two thousand and twenty-three, and I spoke with a, an official, I'll just say, from the provincial government, expressing my frustration when they painted a brush stroke across the province, saying, you will all build four units per property. And I said, have you paused to consider, as councillor Cassidy pointed out, where all the traffic comes from, up and down the coast, the volumes in North Vancouver, not to mention six million people coming in on the ferry every year? And he stood there rather, well, dumbfounded, probably just at how vehemently I approached it, and finally looked at me and said, do your people need to leave the North Shore very often? And I think this is the problem. We've got a province dictating what works in communities across the province without a real understanding of the circumstances within each community. So I agree, it would be nice if they were to come out here and take a real look.
Thank you, councillor Watt. Just before calling a question, I think tonight's an example of how thoughtful our community is. We had a gentleman come who we thought was going to speak in opposition to a development, but in fact was only looking for a way to make their community better, and he was not opposed to development. That's a thoughtful way to do things. I would like to call a question and then ask councillor Lambert to make the second motion. All those in favor? Contrary, the motion is carried. And councillor Lambert.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Sager. I'll take a crack at this. I'd recommend that the District of West Vancouver engage with B.C. Housing, and I'm going to put in here the Ministry of Municipal Affairs as well, to pursue affordable housing projects at the Inglewood and Clehany Park sites.
Thank you. I think that's very wise. Could I have a second, or councillor Thompson?
I'll second that, and I'd like to add that at a recent conference we had, the Lower Mainland Local Governments, last week in Whistler, we make recommendations to bring forward to the province, and in fact, this was brought forward, and we're talking about creating, building density on our own lands and using municipal lands. Recommendation came forward to say, where's the province using its lands to develop? So we do need to hold our feet to the fire.
Thank you. I'd like to call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, the motion is carried. Thank you. There are no bylaws or new business this evening. Could I have a motion on the consent agenda? Councillor Thompson.
Yes, sir. So moved.
Moving the consent agenda items, seconded, councillor Snyder. No discussion, call a question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Other business, adoption of Code of Conduct Committee meeting minutes. Councillor Snyder.
I'd like to recommend that the March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four Code of Conduct Committee meeting minutes be adopted as circulated.
Thank you, councillor Lambert. Call a question, all in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you. Just quick reports from mayor and council. Almost all of the members of council attended last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, to the Lower Mainland Local Government Association meeting in Whistler. It was fairly well-attended, a lot of discussion across a wide variety of subjects, and I know that councillor Watt and Cassidy were thrilled at the motion that they helped see through the resolution process regarding saving bears, was passed unanimously on the floor. And it was a good opportunity to listen and meet with other local leaders in the Lower Mainland and see areas of agreement and disagreement. Anybody else want to add anything? Okay, could I have a motion to receive the report, please? Sorry. Councillor Lambert?
Because I mentioned the keen law at the opening.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Sorry. Moving the motion?
Sure.
Seconded by councillor Watt. Discussion, question, all in favor? Contrary, carried. Are there any public questions or comments this evening? Hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor Thompson.
So moved.
Councillor Cassidy? Off to see new ones?
Quarter to nine, and it's a long way to Women's Hospital, and they'll be sound asleep.
There you go.
But remember, they are three prospective voters.
All those in favor?
Sorry.
Contrary, carried. Thanks very much for joining us this evening.